All right, thank you, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order tonight. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with our org meeting for 2024. Roll call. All board directors are in attendance. And I just need an approval of the agenda. A motion to approve, please.
So made.
By Director Velazquez, a second by Director Bullion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes seven zero. So we'll start with the election of officers. And we start with the board chair position for 2024. So nominations for the various offices may be made by any member and do not require a second from another member. The vote for each position must be public, not taken by secret ballot. The newly elected chair will take over the meeting immediately following his or her election. So the acting chair is asking for nominations for the office of school board chair for 2024. Do we have any nominations for chair?
I nominate Mary France as chair.
Board member Velazquez nominates Board Director France. Director France is nominated. Are there any other nominations for the office of chair?
I'd like to nominate Amy Crosby as chair.
Board member Lisa, Director Atkinson nominates Director Crosby. And while I thank you for that nomination, I'm going to politely decline. Are there any other nominations for board chair?
I'd like to nominate Julie Burnak for chair.
Board Director Atkinson nominates Director Burnak for chair.
I would like to decline that nomination as well.
Director Burnak is declining the nomination. Are there any further nominations for the office of chair? Once again, are there any further nominations for the office of chair? If there are no further nominations, nominations for the office of chair are closed. Director France is the only candidate nominated for the office of chair, and I hereby declare her elected by acclamation and direct the acting clerk to record in the minutes.
As chair, I am going to call for nominations for vice chair clerk. Are there any nominations for vice clerk, vice chair clerk?
I'd like to nominate Amy Bullion for vice chair clerk.
Director Bullion has been nominated for vice chair clerk. Are there any further nominations for the office of vice chair clerk?
I'd like to nominate myself for vice chair clerk, and I'd like to give a simple, a quick explanation of why I would like to offer this nomination. It has been an honor and a serve to serve the Prior Lake Savage community this past year, and I'm proud to continue to serve based on the values that I held true during my campaign: parental rights, academic excellence, and transparency. I ran for office as I felt these values and common sense viewpoints were missing, and over 12,500 voters agreed. I saw our district was driven by progressive ideologies and was headed in the wrong direction, with declining test scores, declining enrollment, and high levels of teacher turnover. I felt that a fresh new perspective was needed in order to truly obtain our mission to educate all learners, to reach their full potential as contributing and productive members of our ever-changing global community. Over this past year, with every decision I made, I held these values close to my heart, and I strive to bring solutions to create positive change. As a business professional, I believe it's important to research, evaluate best practices, and bring a solution aligned to our core values, vision, and strategic direction while following district policy and Minnesota state law. Academic excellence. I recognized it was difficult for our students to focus on the classroom and for teachers with cellphone use in the classroom. I researched a resource, Live More, Screen Less, and presented this to our administration. I am proud to say this program was implemented in our middle schools, and I am looking forward to hearing feedback from students, teachers, and parents on how this program is impacting academic excellence and behavior in the classroom. Parental rights. Over this past year, I have taken a deep dive into understanding Minnesota state law and how it pertains to our district. Last January, I was elected to serve on the Teaching and Learning Committee. This role was previously held by Director France and Director Crosby. When crafting our new charter, I recognized that the makeup of our committee was not meeting Minnesota state law, where the law clearly states, whenever possible, parents and community residents shall comprise of at least two-thirds of the advisory committee. This was corrected, and now we have a robust committee representing a large variety of perspectives in our community and giving our community the ability to have a voice at the table when receiving and selecting curriculum for our district. Transparency. As board directors, we govern through policy, and we are accountable to our community. And for this reason, I believe all policy work should be transparent. One example of when I pushed for transparency is when Chair Crosby and Vice Chair France added Policy 203 to the school board operating norms to the agenda of a board professional development session. I suggested policy work should always be done at a board meeting or a study session, which is recorded and visible to our community. A change was made, and the policy was moved to the next school board meeting for a commitment to transparency. I believe, I believe in freedom of speech and respecting diverse viewpoints, and helped our board understand that per Robert's Rules of Order, during debate on emotion, each board member is allowed to speak, and their speech should not be restricted to three minutes. This experience I gained through my professional role from serving on previous boards, both the Prior Lake Players and the Future Business Leaders of America. I am not afraid to ask hard questions or request important information to help guide the work of our entire board to make the best decisions for our district. The executive committee supports Dr. Thomas, and I think it's incredibly important for him to receive diverse perspectives when dealing with difficult decisions which impact our entire district. What's best for our district is an executive committee with diverse viewpoints, which represent our entire district and community. I have enjoyed working with Dr. Thomas this past year, and we have a respectful working relationship. I appreciate Dr. Thomas's belief that it's important for us to push and pull with grace. I also collaborate with a large number of other school board directors across the state of Minnesota through Minnesota School Board Association and over 90-plus Minnesota Parent Alliance school board directors to bring best practices to our district. I believe it's critical that our executive committee be knowledgeable in the role of a school board director, to show up on time for meetings, to be prepared, and show respect for all board members so that each member feels welcome and safe to openly express their diverse viewpoints while not being undermined or judged by other board members at the table. As we sit here this evening and elect a new executive committee, it is important to note that all three members of our current executive team, Amy Crosby, Mary France, and Julie Burnak, may not be continuing as board directors next year, as they are all three up for election this fall. And I think it's, I believe it's important to have a succession plan in place so that the following year, someone for our executive team will have experience serving in this role and create consistency and stability for our future. It's been a busy year, and I'm proud and excited to continue to bring a new, fresh perspective to help our district team learn, improve, and achieve our mission. For all these reasons, I'd like to nominate myself, Lisa Atkinson, for the role of vice chair, and I'd appreciate your vote.
Are there any other nominations for the role of vice chair clerk for 2024? Are there any other nominations for the role of board vice chair clerk for 2024? Okay, with that being said, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote. The first candidate nominated was Director Bullion. So if we can start from the left side there?
Nay.
Director Velazquez?
Aye.
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 Aye. That is, all in favor is five to one for Director Bullion. Six to one, sorry. Do I need to do a roll call vote again? Okay, so roll call vote for Director Atkinson. Again, we'll start with the left.
Aye.
Nay.
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 Nay. That is six to one, so Director Bullion will be our new vice chair clerk for 2024. Next, I would like to take nominations for the role of board treasurer for 2024. Can I please have a nomination for the role of board treasurer for 2024?
I'll nominate myself for treasurer.
Are there any other nominations for the role of board treasurer for 2024?
I nominate Julie Burnak.
Are there any other nominations for the role of board treasurer, sorry, for 2024? Okay. Board member Olson nominated Julie Burnak for the role of board treasurer. Oh, let me just make sure I got, excuse me. So, and Board Director Atkinson nominated herself for the role of board treasurer. So we're going to start with the first nomination and take roll call votes for the role of board treasurer for Director Bullion. I'll start with you, Director Olson.
Director Burnak.
Director Burnak, sorry. Just looking at this, sorry. Oh, Lisa was the first. I apologize for that, Director Atkinson. So we're going to start with board treasurer, the nominations and vote for board treasurer, Director Atkinson. So can we start, we'll start this side with Director Olsted.
No. Nay.
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 Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that is, and I am a nay, so that is, I'm sorry, an aye, so that is five to. And now we're going to do with nominate, the nomination for Board Director Atkinson for treasurer.
Burnak.
Burnak, God, I'm sorry, I'm looking over there, Burnak. So we'll start again with Director Olsted.
Aye.
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 Nay.
An aye, so that is also five to in favor of Director Burnak.
He voted two times.
Six to one? You voted aye? Okay, sorry about that. That is six to one. Thank you very much for that. Okay, okay. So our new board treasurer for 2024 is going to be Director Burnak, our existing one. Okay, so do you want to change?
Yes.
Want to go through recess?
Let's wait, should we go through the org meeting?
Do the org meeting and then change? Okay. So next on the agenda is the consent agenda. The following consent agenda, want to change first? Do a recess and change?
I think we have some other things to talk about on the agenda. There's the, there is, we need to go through our committees, the assignment of committees.
Director Atkinson, we are going to change the positions first and take the recess. So I'm going to take a motion for recess.
So made.
In a second?
Second.
Okay, so we'll be in a five-minute recess just to change positions and change titles. Okay. We are going to resume the organizational meeting. I'm going to ask for some quiet in the room, please. Okay, so we're resuming the organizational meeting. Our first order after the election of officers is the consent agenda. The consent agenda is, is a organizational meeting annual event in which we usually vote on all items as one. The consent agenda requires the following board approval and includes the designation of depositories for the school district funds, designate the official school district legal newspaper, name the school district financial consultants, naming of the school district legal councils, naming of the district auditing firm, naming of the assistant board clerk, authorization of persons to lease, purchase, and contract for goods and services, designate the school district special education director, district LEA, the ESEA programs and data practices, compliance officer, delegate the authority to make electronic transfers, direct administration to publish notification in the official district newspapers, and designation of the identified official with the authority for the MDE external user access recertification system. All of these are described in the board packet. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So made.
Can I have a second? Any just?
Chair France, I'd like to pull out the name of the school district legal council to name this and have a more in-depth conversation around that, please. Six D.
Okay, so I am going to remove item D from the consent agenda, and we'll move that to the, because we have a lot of other topics to discuss, we're going to move that to right before the end. Is that okay?
Okay.
Okay. Are there any other discussion items? Okay. Hearing none, I'm going to ask for a vote on the consent agenda for all items excluding number D.
So made.
Aye.
Second?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any against? Okay, so that passes seven zero. Right, the next item on the agenda is the school board compensation. The compensation between 2023 and 2024 has not changed, and I do not recommend any changes. So can I get a motion for the 2024 school board compensation? A second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I would like to bring just some clarity and transparency to our community regarding school board compensation and what it takes to be a good school board director. Our last compensation for clarity was, I believe, in 2017, school compensation was $5,000, and in 2018, it was changed to $6,000. So our compensation hasn't changed from six, from 2018. And I would just say the role of the school board as a school board director has changed. And I would say in order to be an effective school board director, it takes a lot of work. I spend about 30 to 40 hours a week specifically working on school board. I don't just show up at the board meetings and rubber stamp and vote yes. So I, while I will certainly respect the will of the board, I think I want to be transparent with the community that this is a service role. We're not here for the compensation, but yet there has not been a compensation increase since 2017 for a school board director role. And that's, so I'll respect the will of the board, but I wanted to add some transparency to that, to our community.
Are there any other discussion items? Does anyone want to make a comment or?
Are there comments?
And in my understanding, we're pretty in line with our neighboring communities, if not, if not a tad high, except for the larger districts. And one outlier there is actually Lakeville, who this year chose to get paid $1, and I'm sure it related to their budget situation. So with that being said, and the research I've done, I feel really good about where we're at. I do think we put in a lot of hours, so yeah, it's definitely a service role. But I'm comfortable with keeping it as is.
I think you're going to see some changes, particularly Lakeville this evening is asking for $13,000 compensation, so, or somewhere around there, so. Because, just because of the work that it takes, like they said, the work, it's an extensive role, so. And I'm not asking for that. I just want to be real clear. I'm not asking for that at all. Like I said, I'm here, I'm here to serve. I was elected to serve to bring the voice to the community, so I am aligned.
I think, I hear you, and I think it does take work. I think the distinction that needs to be made in terms of role is really understanding the role of administrators versus board directors. And that's, sometimes that can get blurry in understanding, and so I just want to point that out as administrators are hired to really, you know, manage the district, so.
Anyone else have any other comments or? Okay. Hearing no more, I'm going to take a vote on the 2024 board compensation. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any against? Okay, that passes seven zero. The next item is the approval of board committee assignments. All of you have the committee assignments sitting at your desk or at your chair. I'm going to take a motion first to approve the board committee assignments for 2024.
So made.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on the committee assignments?
I have a couple of questions. So since I have not served on the Community Education Service, and Chair France, you did, could you tell me a little bit more about that role and serving on that committee, please?
On the community, pardon me?
Committee Education Services Committee Advisory Council.
The Community Education Services?
Correct.
Okay. That is for community ed? And that meets at noon? Approximately once a month unless something else comes up, and you're part of an overall advisory council for that. Discusses all issues from budget to community ed programming, et cetera.
And then my same question is going to go true with the Metro ECSU Educational Cooperative Service Unus. Jess, you were on that one before. Could I get a little bit of a better understanding of what that committee is about?
Sure. It has actually since been rebranded, rebranded as Brightworks.
As Brightworks?
Brightworks, all one word. And it's a lot of really great professional development for teachers and staff. And it's just a really good way to kind of keep your, keep your pulse on what's available and what kind of things that are being offered around the state. Well, I shouldn't say around the state, around the metro for teachers and staff, and it's actually really great to know what's out there and even some webinars and things that I've participated in, just as an eagle eye. Not eagle eye, fly in the wall. It's really interesting. They don't meet too often, but you're basically kind of, you can do what you want. You can attend different webinars that they offer and things like that on your own time if you wish, through them.
So there's, there's no set meeting times or?
There are. They're not as frequent, and they are kind of going through, they're soliciting board members right now for that organization as well. So I'm imagining, once they do that, then they might have more of a set schedule.
Just as a public reminder, in accordance with Policy 213, former Chair Crosby, via email to the board and also publicly announced at both the December board meeting as well as the study session, asked each sitting board member to submit which committees they wanted to be part of and asked to do that before the end of 2024 and have any questions answered about those committees. And in accordance with Policy 213 and with the power of the chair, those committees were assigned. But a discussion is always welcome.
And I appreciate that, because those were not the committees that I originally selected. I did not select those, so thank you. I wanted to get, so I have a clear understanding of what the commitment is. I wanted to better understand that, so thank you for answering that question. I did not. I had two selections. One was for the Teaching and Learning Committee, and one was for the Strategic Planning Committee. Those were my two selections.
So just to finish my sentence, as I recall, you asked for Teaching and Learning, which you served on last year. So we held that into this year, along with many of the board committees. A lot of the same board reps are staying on those in terms of the board committees, the district-wide and the external agency representation. They shuffle depending on, you know, availability of people, so.
I just wanted to make sure. Thank you. I wanted to make sure that I could make those meetings, because I do have a professional job. Thank you.
Are there any other discussion comments?
How are we assigning the Strategic Planning Committee?
It's, it's, it's. Oh, she asked about the Strategic Committee and.
How are the board members?
Yeah, how are the board members being assigned?
On, on the, on the list there, the Strategy Committee has the executive officers on it only.
So if I'm reading this correctly, on your Strategic Planning Core Team, the board chair, Mary France, the vice chair, Amy Bullion, and the board chair, board treasurer, Julie Burnak, will be the ones who are standing, who are serving on the Strategic Planning Core Team. I would like to challenge that. I think I bring a voice to the community of the community that is not represented on that team, and I have the time certainly to be able to serve in that role, and I would like to be able to serve on the Strategic Planning Core Team. Nowhere does it say in policy that those three executive roles should be able to serve on the Strategic Planning Core Team. And how is that decided, if it's not listed in policy?
First of all, it's an ad hoc committee.
Correct.
So the ad hoc committees are, are separate in our policy. So basically, the administration, together with our, our consulting team, determined that we were going to emphasize community members on the Strategic Planning Committee and that to make it fair that only the executive officers, but of course, well, only the executive officers would be on that particular committee.
Yeah, and I'd just like to challenge that. I mean, I'm happy to serve. I think I've said it over and over again that I'm happy to serve in that role, especially I'm not, since I'm not going to be serving on the executive team. I would, I would like to serve on the Strategic Planning Core Team.
So I think we have seven people that would be happy to serve in that role and would like to be in that room. Given our discussion at the study session, we wanted to max out the board representation on the Strategic Core Team and yet not have a quorum. So that's how we got to three, and with the recommendation from our consultant and with the support of board members serve in executive committee roles with the support of their peers. They get voted on, and so it seemed logical that that would then be the representation serving on the Strategic Core Team. And I still believe that we all, as board members, will have a voice with that strategic process moving forward, because those meetings will happen and that strategy work will be coming to the board for approval, redirection, feedback, input, discussion.
Yeah, I, from my experience working on this board for the first year, there is clearly different powers given to the executive board team, different information given to the executive core team. And so I am just, if that's the will of the board, I'll step aside. I'm going to attend as many of those Strategic Plorcaning, Plor, I can't talk. Strategic Planning Core Team meetings, as well as the ones with the community, and I will make sure that our community's voices are represented at those meetings.
Well, pending approval of the roster today, we'll have 50, 50-ish community members? Yeah.
Correct, and I'm looking forward to that discussion, by the way.
That item is on the regular board meeting agenda.
I'm looking forward to that discussion.
Is there, are there any other discussion points or comments from members? Is there, are there any other discussion points or comments from members of the board?
I would just like to say one thing to make something clear. In my role as the board treasurer the last year, I was not privy to any more information than anybody else that I'm aware of and I'd like to just make sure that everyone understands that. All our committee meetings, executive committee meetings are open to the public and Director Atkinson, you attended some of those, so I would say I have not received any information that the entire board has not received at any given time. I would just like to state that clearly for the record as well.
Julie, I appreciate that, I mean, Director Bernick, I appreciate that. My question for you then would be, have you previewed the applicants for the strategic planning committee?
No, absolutely not. 100%, absolutely not.
Okay, thank you.
Do you think I, I mean, no, I have not seen it. I saw the, the choices on the.
Are there any other comments or are we ready for a vote? Okay, so on the approval of board committee assignments for 2024, can I have a vote of approval for?
Motion.
Motion for approval?
So made.
In a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against?
Nay.
Okay, that passes six to one. All right, the next item on the agenda is the discussion of meeting and procedures format. Again, this is pursuant to the board policy 203 that was passed and reviewed as far as our board operating norms, which covers our board procedures and discussions. So that is also covered in section 6.11 also of our meeting and procedures format, so I'm going to ask for a motion to approve.
I don't, I don't think we have to, it's just, right Martha?
It's just for reference.
We don't have to approve it?
No approval.
It was just on the list, okay. So any discussion on that? Hearing no discussion, I'm going to move on to the in-service discussion and that is on our calendar, in-service discussion, board development and June board retreat. I want to remind everybody as we're going to be talking about at the end of our next meeting that we do have the MSBA board development, that's at the end of this week, it is on the 11th and 12th, Thursday and Friday of this week, and that is for board development. And then also, normally we have at least one board retreat and then we of course have the calendar that's already been approved, that includes all study sessions. I am, I am going to suggest that we hold the June board retreat just as a placeholder, but I'm going to be discussing with the board at various study sessions to actually include two board retreats this year and we'll be discussing dates and agendas in, in upcoming study sessions, if that's okay?
Yeah, any idea of when?
No, not yet, no, we, we're probably going to have to do a poll to see who's available when and then that also discuss the agenda items and if we want a speaker because that also depends on the speakers' availability.
And can I ask who determines that speaker then?
Normally, according to our policy, the executive committee discusses, but we also take input from the entire board and discuss that with the entire board.
Noted, thank you.
As we did last. Okay, with no further comments or discussion, yes?
We need to address six D, please, the name of the legal counsel, thank you.
Okay, so, sorry about that. Item D that was taken off the consent agenda, we have the school district legal council named as Knutson, Flynn, and Deans, Ratwick, Roswick, and Maloney, Squires, Walzberger, and Mace, and Dorsey and Whitney. So I'm going to open up this topic for discussion. Can I have a motion to?
So made.
Second?
Second.
And discussion, please?
Yeah, I just wanted to get clarification of the different services that we use. Recently, there's been some conversation about something that happened to some board members up in the Elk River School District and it was with Walzberger, if you could read that one, Squires.
Squires, Walzberger, and Mace?
Correct. And so I just wanted to ask the question of, you know, do we, when we're looking at legal services, do we use all, like, what's the process when we're requesting legal service? Do we use all of them or do we use just one of them or?
I'm going to ask.
I've seen invoices from both of them, or all of them.
I'm, I'm going to ask Director Herman to elaborate on that.
Director Atkinson. The legal service that we use is Squires, Walzberger, and Mace and that depends on whether we're. We use the Ratwick, Roswick, and Maloney for.
Only for some professional development council or things that we've, we've attended, but we haven't used them for general counsel in quite some time. Dorsey and Whitney, we have used for bond counsel, the last time we used them was in And then the Knutson, Flynn, and Deans was used in the 2020 election resolution for their specific legal counsel on that. So the main one we go to is Squires, Walzberger, and Mace.
Thank you for that.
Any further discussion or questions? Okay, I'd like to take a motion.
A motion was made.
Or motion was made. Motion was made, okay. So all in favor of approving the four legal counsel as our district counsel?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Okay, that passes seven-zero. Okay, that concludes our organization meeting, I'm going to take a motion to adjourn.
So made.
So made. Second.
Okay, we are adjourned and we will take, for the benefit of the people in the audience, about a five-minute break and then we will start again on our regular meeting.